And one, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. It is a little after four thirty. And our first meeting is with our friends who are representatives from the Tifton Housing Authority, which we very much appreciate you being here with us today. We have started, the council has been meeting with all the various boards. We have many boards and commissions and authorities that we interact with, that we work with, that we appoint members to. And we have some of us, for example, Councilman Threlle's been on the council for what? Sixty-two years, for a long time, maybe?
I'm going up to seventy-one.
Seventy-one years, they're a long time. And then we have some, no, it's silly, but we have some newer council members. So we just want to make sure that-
I was joking, I've been eight years.
Yeah.
Eight years.
We just want to make sure that everyone on the council and all of us, what all of our various boards do, and to give you a chance to meet all of us, if you haven't met all of us. And then how can we be good stewards and good partners in whatever the mission of your particular board is. And so we appreciate all of you being here today. So we have until about five-thirty, no, about five, it's five, five-thirty. Five-thirty, we'll have the public hearing. And so if y'all want to move your, come up to the front row here, or kind of pull your chairs up, whatever, we're, it's all very friendly. We would come down to you, but we have these screens that we can't move, unfortunately. Otherwise, we'd all sit around the table together. So that being said, Pete, I'll turn it over to you if you want to kind of get things started.
Okay. Okay, mayor and council, thank you to all the board members for coming in, just talking, having a conversation. One of the, like the mayor said, one of the things that we wanted to do this particular year is just to meet, talk through the bylaws, who's serving, some of the ins and outs of your board, where the funding comes from, how we can partner better together, how we can collaborate better. And I don't know if this was ever done. So the mayor and council asked me to be helpful. Thank you for providing a couple of things. We've never seen the bylaws before. And this afternoon, if we can, I just put a couple of things together, just the bylaws. Like I said, section seven is particularly important about the election of appointment. And council, I did give you an updated copy of the board itself, so we could kind of look at that. The current board members and the original appointment date, that's, I don't have anything reaching back very long, so we probably need your help with that. Policy versus administration. And if there's a place, or if there's a planning in place for any report, how is a board, how are you looking at the housing authority, what things are going to be coming up, what has been achieved, et cetera? And then current condition of properties, we wanted to go through just what we're seeing as we start ramping up with code enforcement, as we're talking about redevelopment plans, as we're talking about cleaning up certain areas. We have to be a part of this, absolutely part of it. And that is one of their goals this particular year. So please understand, this is just really a conversation, a chance for us to have a conversation. This is not to say, hey, this is what you're doing, that, because you could probably, you could probably point a finger, that's many times just to say that. So, and then lastly, I think the mayor could kind of give you an overview of our redevelopment plans, right in the particular neighborhoods that we're talking about. So with that, so if we could just turn to that section seven. Mayor and council, if you want to go through election of appointments, maybe Dr. Day has a, do you have any knowledge on the appointments, on how this, how this works?
Well, I have a little, now that you have the former and the in-form system, you're going to understand that, that if you go look at what's written down, that's not always followed. Often depends upon where you are sitting. Because if you're there and you have this as one of your priorities, you will search it quite differently from someone who's sitting where you're sitting. It's just another conversation. That being the case, then we do have rules and regulations that we're going by as to how the elected appointments are taken, because that relies upon you. Now, as far as what happens once we're appointed, then authority within itself has the very, very vivid, but certain aspect to it, that even though we belong to you, there's sometimes truth in that you are the one who accepts that we are a certain, and I said that trying to break the ice. What that means is that you, any authority is set up for to do things that you as a municipality and all could not do. But by the same token, you can do one thing, and that is you can appoint us, but after you appoint us, you can't come in and tell us what to do on a day-to-day basis. But anybody within Monica's sense would know that you're the one that's going to appoint us, you have to do some of the things that you want us to do. And with that, and a great uni, a unique bit of information, I checked with Ms. Clark from Co-County, and found out that she's been with us, what is it, eighteen, eighteen years, and I think I've been with her for twenty-six years. So with that, we go back to the Reinhardt days, to Mr., what's the guy named, on the top, Tifton, Harper, no, not Mr. Harper, it's just a little guy.
The other half, yeah.
And those were individuals who saw a need to put the authority together several years ago. And with that, we have one of the six members that are appointed about you, and is one that we appointed, and two of them are appointed kind of from, they both have to have, have themselves, or being a member, and one of our dark units. But when we look from that, now, running, before I told you, she didn't know how nervous we're going to be in downtown tonight, because we usually handle the appointment, both my offices, may, we fear. And that may, a year means that we couldn't go forward, because we don't know who two of us are going to want, and what those positions will be. So that was just something that kind of popped up to us, but that, I want you to know that of the ones that we have in the jargon of our here today, we take special emphasis in making sure that we believe in diversity, and not diversity is for our races, so for our races concerned, but it's for a gender's concern, it's for a social concern, all of those things, we take on that vibe, and we try to get that over the place. Now, what we do with the in-form department, I want to tell you about a little more detail, is that sometimes they ask me exactly what I do, and I tell them that I do what needs to be done, but I also make sure that I know who's sitting there, and every one of you who's sitting on that committee. To, right, last week, found myself sitting with the, for breakfast, two of you, and I start talking about the authority, that really is uneasy, because it would appear out of lobbying for the authority within itself. But those are the kinds of things you do behind the scenes. And to put it in a little more perspective, that for you, Ms. Clark called me earlier today, and told me we had another problem, and that problem was, she'll get into some more detail, that one of the representatives found bedbugs, and bedbugs in the time, called the apartment, called the BLB, called all those places before we got here today. Now, why does she call me? Smart lady. She wants to make sure that she keeps me informed, so I can keep you informed of what kind of thing happened. And so that brings us then to why we are here, as far as trying to help you understand what we do, and knowing that we rely quite heavily on what you do as far as our experience itself. That being the case, then, we have one thing that we can do as a board, and that is we set policy. And once we set the policy, we move very quickly to being to our executive director, which is by law, we must do that. And I presented this time.
Okay, just before, the mayor and council, just in the bylaws, page two, I just want to just point out the third paragraph where it says the commissioners of the authority shall be appointed by the mayor in the city of Tifton in accordance with the law of the state of Georgia, and shall hold office for five years or until their successor is appointed. So I just want to make sure you knew that. That's one of the things we talked about. And then if you, you want, maybe Sandra could go through the housing authority board members, because I don't have the data that this five term, five years, I don't have anything before that, so I don't know how many years each of you have been serving, so that would be helpful. Is that something that you'd like to know, or how many years they've been, yeah, I'd like to know that.
Sandra, can you help with that?
They can help with that. Dr. Day, I know has been serving since nineteen ninety-two. Mrs. Van Weppler came on in two thousand one. Ms. Willis just came on last year, say, two years.
Two years.
Ms. Howard came on about two thousand five, and Ms. Pettiford came on maybe two thousand four. And I'm not exactly sure about those dates, because we don't have, you know, we don't have the members of it. We just get information from you all that came, you know, been appointed.
Is that anything you can get on that?
So Mr. Pettiford was in two thousand five?
Uh, two thousand four.
Two thousand four?
I think it may have been a little before, because Ms. Howard came in after.
Fourteen years, and Howard was in two thousand five.
What about, what about Ms. Watson?
Ms. Watson just came on last year. She's the resident commissioner, yes.
She's the resident, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, who came on last year?
And then Ms. Lee, just following that.
And that's the, that's, is that?
She's the resident.
The resident, okay.
Yes.
So she's got one year.
Just, so we have a conversation about this too. One of the questions, if someone misses three consecutive meetings, is there any, have you ever taken any action?
Uh, yes, we have. We had a resident commissioner who did not come for several meetings, and Dr. Day taught her that she did, she did, yes.
Okay, good, so that's one of the questions. So I think it'd be appropriate, Sandra, just could address the board, if you could talk about policy versus administration, because we kind of intrigued us to, when you talk about setting policy and then administration, how it works, you know, are you working off a plan, how does it interface with budget, some of the strengths, maybe some of the opportunities that you have, I mean, your, and I hate to push you on the spot, but I'm just trying to-
She's not on the spot.
Same. Can you close that door back there? It's just so noisy out there, it's kind of hard to hear.
Does anybody know, when did Jim Lee come on?
Jim Lee came on in two thousand fifteen, I believe. But please let me get these numbers to you, and then go through a little bit more research, these are approximately.
That's, did it take a year, or we're just on a, you know, was it two years, or was it twenty-five years?
No, no.
So two, so we're approximately three years.
Yes.
Okay. I don't remember when Jim was appointed.
Okay.
Jamie, do you want to? Okay, again, good evening, everyone, good afternoon, everyone, because it's not six o'clock yet. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come before you this evening. And I'm going to just give you a brief overview of the housing authority, the number of units that we have, and a little bit about what we're doing and where we're going. And if you have some questions, please, please feel free to ask. But let me start off by what you just asked about, policy versus administration. Typically, the board sets policy, but there are some things that come from HUD. Okay, case in point, right now, we're getting ready to do our smoke-free implementation that has to be done by July the thirty-first. And so what we started doing last year was, okay, this came from HUD, we started talking to the residents about it last May, that this is going to be policy, that you will not be allowed to smoke within twenty-five feet of any public housing authority property. And the same thing goes for employees, you can't smoke in vehicles, that kind of thing. So what I did was took the information from HUD, the requirements, and put it into a policy. I presented it to the board, and for them to vote on it, and for our attorney to look at it and make sure it follows all the guidelines. So that's kind of an example of how we do policy and administration. Now, what happens is, once the board approves it, we send it to the residents. We're going to have resident meetings, I believe, the fourth week of this month concerning smoke-free implementation, and then we're going to offer them opportunities for smoking cessation classes, things like that. And then we will make sure all the leases are updated, and it takes effect first of August.
So what happens if you catch them smoking?
There are some requirements. The first time you get a warning, the second time, there's a hundred dollar charge, the third time, there's a two hundred dollar fee, and the fourth time, it is eviction. However, that's only in a twelve-month period. So if you do it three times this year, and not, you know, not again within that twelve month period, and again, these are HUD's rules, not ours. So after that, after that twelve-month period, they start over. You get another warning and so forth. That's, does that answer your question?
I answered it.
Okay. Okay, so just a little bit about the housing authority. The housing authority was established in nineteen fifty, okay? The very first development, which was Peterson, opened in nineteen fifty-two. And I believe I sent you some information on that, so you may have that information with you. We have three hundred and thirty-nine units. We used to have three hundred and eighty-three units, but what you know is these is no longer public housing. It is now a multi-family property. And that means it's just still under HUD, still have guidelines, but it's a different funding stream, okay? Different, it's a little bit easier to manage, okay? So again, we have three hundred and thirty-nine units, ten developments. Two of those developments are in Omega. We have twenty-four units down there. We have sixteen employees that are full-time, and they are administrative employees, we have housing employees, maintenance, and resident services. We have one employee in resident services. Now, our sources of funding come from rental income, which you have a copy of our budget, so you'll know that we estimate about four hundred and forty thousand dollars for rental income, operating subsidy. Now, that's a little bit different. We estimate it. We never know what we're going to get. We estimate it at one point one four million dollars this year in that budget. However, when the president signed the new budget, we got a ten percent increase. So we may get a little bit more, however, there is talk of a recession, so we may not get that, we don't know. I've had three different funding amounts this year already. We get funded on a monthly basis.
And that comes, does that come from HUD, directly from HUD?
Yes, yes, directly from HUD, yes. And we had an amount for January and February, March and April, and we have a different amount for May. So another funding source is capital fund. Last year, we got five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. This year, we have not received the amount yet, we don't know yet.
Where does that come from?
It comes from HUD also.
That comes from HUD.
Yes, but capital fund is strictly for capital projects, major issues. And I'll get to a little bit more about what we're doing with that in just a few minutes. We also get management fees from managing THP, well, D's for THP, we have a management contract. So our total economic impact is around two point one seven million dollars. Now, just some statistics about the housing authority. We have eight hundred twenty-five occupants in public housing, and that's all of our family members. We have a hundred and thirteen in the multi-family side, so we have a total of nine hundred thirty members. The average age is forty. The average residency period, which is a question I get all the time, how long do people stay? Families typically stay about six point two years, a little over six years. The elderly typically stay more. They stay about eight and a half years. And that is because most of the time, our elderly come to us, they are, they are not going to be anywhere else. They're going to leave from us and go stay with children, they're going to leave from us and maybe go to a nursing home, or unfortunately, some pass away. So that's with elderly. Our income sources, child support, wages, SSI, social security, and what we call contributions. That is, you may not have the income, but somehow your electricity is getting paid, so somebody's paying it for you, and we count that, okay? Average rent is a hundred and eight dollars. Our monthly rent roll is thirty-six thousand. Now, how do you determine whether residents are eligible? They have to make less than eighty percent of median income, which is, the area median income is forty-nine-nine, so they have to have less than that, less than eighty percent of that. Now, forty percent have to have less than thirty percent of that, okay? Forty percent of our new admissions must be less than thirty percent of area median income, median income, and that's for a family of four. And we get a little chart that lists it out for up to eight family members, so it varies. We do a criminal background check, we do a credit check, but we don't check for credit, we're checking for dispossessors and evictions, disposed primarily, and writ of disposition. We also have landlord verification, and we have what's called Employment Income Verification System, EIV. And it's where we type in their social security numbers, and it comes back to us if they're working, to make sure we have the correct information, because when we submit some information, say we submit something that says the resident is not working, but they have something different, then we have to go back to the resident and say, hey, you didn't report this. And if in fact they are working, then we have to charge them retro rent, you have to pay us back for what, what you didn't pay initially. We also have what's called the Public Information Center, which is what we call PIC. We submit all of our information on a monthly basis into that system to HUD, go straight to HUD. And if some, if they're occupying another unit somewhere else, or if they owe somebody else money, they have to pay before we can admit them. They have to pay the other housing authority or the other assisted facility. Okay, some of the programs that we have. We have our summer literacy program that serves K through three. We work with the YMCA on their Food for Thought program. They come every day during the year, well, Monday through Friday, and then they have different sites during the summer. I think they operate at Peterson, operate at Dixie Avenue Golden, which is behind Eighth Street Middle School, also operate at Bellevue. Let's see, we have, they, we work with Urban Elevation, which is at the Methodist Church. It's a boys' program. We have a program called Guys to Gentlemen, in which the young men, they learn how to tie ties, they learn how to approach people. It's an etiquette class, really, for young men. And we have career-oriented programs. We ask folks to come in and talk to them about their careers, you know, and sometimes the kids have specific people. Like one time, we had a kid that wanted to be a weatherman, and so we called up Fox, and they sent a weather person over to talk to the kids. This has been years ago, but that's the kind of thing that we do. We have our senior activities. Every month, the seniors play bingo, and then during holidays, we do special things for those holidays. Fourth of July, we have a celebration, Thanksgiving, you know, just for social reasons, so that they can get out, you know, get out of their apartments. We have a resident advisory council. Now, it's not active right now, because we are, we don't have anyone in that position. In fact, she starts tomorrow, our new resident services and community outreach manager. So once she comes, she'll get the resident council activated again. And what they do is meet, and they give us input from what they're seeing on the property, so that when we get ready to do capital fund, we can incorporate their thoughts into capital fund. You know, if they're noticing major problems with certain things, they let us know what they see.
How is that set up? Is it like a representative from each property that serves on the council?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
We have, each summer, our youth participate in the youth leadership conference, and that is where we send ten kids, and they do resume writing, they do how to dress for success, they do the ramifications of sexting, all that kind of stuff, things that can help them be successful adults. Then we also have resident leadership conference, and where the adults, typically the resident council, they go to classes just like the kids do, it's just more geared for adults. Now, rent determination, we have minimum rent of fifty dollars, but we also have what's called flat rent, two years ago, no, it's been longer than, it's been about five years ago. The Obama administration indicated that flat rent, which is the top rent that you can pay, has to be eighty percent of the fair market rent for that area, okay? So let me just give you an example. If fair market rent for a five-bedroom is a thousand dollars in Tifton County, resident on flat rent has to pay at least eight hundred, okay? That's, that's the requirement if they're on flat rent. The other opportunity, the other choice is thirty percent of adjusted income, and adjusted means that you have deducted for children, you've deducted for medical expenses, if it's more than, I believe, three percent of your total income. And there's some other adjustment, if you're a senior, or if you're disabled for that. Or they can pay ten percent of gross, okay? And all of our residents are either on flat rent or thirty percent of adjusted. Nobody wants to do ten percent of gross. And so their total tenant payment is that tenant, is the rent less utilities, because each apartment is assigned a utility allowance, and it may be a hundred and fifty dollars, and it includes an allowance for gas, for electricity, for whatever those utilities are in that apartment, and that is subtracted. So if your rent is calculated at three hundred dollars, and your utility allowance is one fifty for that apartment, then you pay us one hundred and fifty dollars. That's how that works. Our monitoring mechanisms, HUD does monitor us, just like any other organization. We have what's called our Public Housing Assessment System. Right now, we are a high performer, we, our score is ninety-three. And what they score is your physical, they come, they send a third-party contractor down to go through a sample of our units. We have our capital fund score, that is that capital fund grant that I spoke to you about, are we obligating it, are we spending it timely, are we spending it the way we're supposed to? We have a financial score also, and that is, are we managing our money? Do we have proper reserves? Because we have to maintain X amount of dollars in our reserves. And then we have the management score, which talks, deals with rent and reexams, well, and reexams are when residents have to come in and recertify that they're eligible. We also have independent audits annually, have to have an audit. Also HUD, I mentioned earlier the PIC system, HUD goes in and monitors us through that PIC system also. And you can have HUD onsite reviews. We've not had one, I've been through one before at another housing authority, but we've not had one here. However, we have had desk reviews. That's where they call you, is ask you to send all the documentation to them, rather than them coming onsite. Now, some of the major issues facing us, our aging properties, our-
I'd like to, yes, thank you to go back, please. I'm talking about speak to some of the things that you did for working with kids, and all the things you did for leadership program, for reading programs, for plights.
Right, we do, I did not mention the Read Aloud program. We have a certified teacher, well, we have, yeah, she's a certified teacher, come in and help our children improve their reading skills, because we know that if you read well by grade three, you are more likely to be successful in college. And so we want our kids to be able to read, we want them. Our goal, and I didn't mention our mission to you, our mission is, the Tifton Housing Authority is committed to achieving excellence and providing safe, clean, and modern housing while promoting self-sufficiency and upward mobility to its residents. And my goal is to help folks move in, move up, and move out, okay? We don't want you to stay in public housing forever, and that's why we do the children's programs, so that they know that there is something else, that they can move forward, they don't have to be in public housing forever.
How often are those kind of programs? I know that like the YMCA summer program obviously is in the summer, but the, like the Read Aloud and some of the others, are those weekly or monthly?
They are weekly.
Okay.
And sometimes we do twice a week, but most of them are weekly.
Okay.
Yes, we have something, four days a week for the kids, maybe a different program, I think Mondays, we do Read Aloud. We also have, we noticed some of the kids were having issues with conflict resolution, so we hired a counselor to come in and talk with the kids and work with them on team building, conflict resolution, self-esteem, those types of things. We do that. That's on Tuesdays, we have Urban Elevation on Tuesdays, and Thursdays, on Wednesdays. We have the career, the career thing, they go on field trips, they have speakers come in, and also on, I think we have something else on Thursday. Well, it's, we have the Food for Thought, all, they actually come in on Friday. We don't do any programs out of the office on Friday, because we work from eight to six on Monday through Thursday, and eight to twelve on Friday, so we're not there.
And the attendance is good, you get good participation from everybody?
For some of them, sometimes, like they love Urban Elevation, and they love Guys to Gentlemen. And so in the summertime, we have lots of kids indicate in the summer literacy program. That we also do plight, we make sure they're transported. We're not asking during the program, we make sure they get to and from, and yes, they do, they participate. In years past, we've had waiting lists for kids to get into programs.
Shonda, you mentioned a lot of children's programs. What do you have for the adults? You have like the financial literacy, anything like that?
Yes, we have done financial literacy two or three times. That is a little bit, it's a little bit more difficult to get the adults involved, because ninety percent of our residents who are eligible to work do work. And so we just have a small percentage that don't work, and so it's hard to get them into those programs. But we typically do, we do standalone programs, we've done financial literacy, we've done nutrition, let's see, what else have we done? Parenting, those types of things, yes. But they're typically, you know, if we do a parenting program, it may be a six-week curriculum. Let's see, what else have we done? If we do nutrition, it may be, I don't know, once a month for two or three months, that kind of thing. But it's not as often, just because it's a little bit harder to get those adults in. And then we had the GED program, but we had to close it down due to lack of participation. But what we have done, is said, okay, we understand you don't want to go here, we will transport you out to Multirtech if you want to participate in the program, and we pay for the tests for our residents. Okay? Any more questions?
Mr. Keighley?
Okay.
Mr. Kegel?
Okay. Okay, um, I was discussing the major issues facing the housing authority, the aging properties, of course, the reduction in funding. Now, this year, we got an increase, uh, but we don't know what's going to happen next year. We'll see. Because our money is directly based on the administration that's in the White House, uh, in Congress, so we'll see. Um, the other couple of things, we have housing the mentally ill. As you know, as I'm sure you know, many of the mentally ill facilities have been closed down. And so we're housing, uh, folks, and we don't really have, we're not social workers. But we try to make sure our residents have access to whatever they need. Uh, because it's, it's in the best interest of all the residents. Um, so that's one of the things that we're facing. We're trying to figure out, how do we address, make sure their needs are met? How, what, what do we do? So, you know, we have training sessions on that. How do I identify different, different problems that we see? And who do we send them to whom we have, who do we need to call? Uh, another major issue, just like, uh, Dr. Day mentioned earlier, bedbugs. Last year, we had fifty-five cases of bedbugs. That is a major issue. And it costs from anywhere from six hundred to one thousand one, eleven fifty to treat a unit. And sometimes we have to double treat, uh, if, you know, we have a protocol. Just like you said, the gentleman called, uh, WALB today. Anyway, but the issue is, there's a product, there's a procedure. You have to pack up all your stuff. You have to clean out all your cabinets, clean out all your drawers, you have to strip down your beds. Uh, and we put it in now for, if we're doing it in-house, we have to put it in a hot box, heat it up. It's just not a day process. It takes two or three days to get ready for it. Uh, and I think in some cases, that might not be well understood. But that's what we have, so that's one of the major issues we're facing. We, we spend a lot of money on bedbugs. Now, our plans for the future. We just, when you, I mentioned that we had this, uh, property that we just switched to Most of Family, these. We're trying to evaluate now if we want to do other properties like that. Because it's turning out to be a good program, and we like it. The thing is, you have to have everything up to code. The reason we were able to do these that way, is because we had gone through a four-year renovation of that property. We spent about two point eight million dollars to renovate that prop, property over the course of four years. And so we're trying to see if we are able to do that with other properties. Uh, so that's one of the things we're trying to evaluate. We are getting ready, also after we finish Old Omega Road. Right now, we're in the process of, we've signed a contract to renovate all the kitchens and bathrooms at that property. And that contract is five hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
And that was at which property?
Old Omega Road, yes. So after we leave that property, we didn't think we were going to be able to do it all in one year, but we're going to be able to do the entire property in one year. So that means we can go to something else early. Uh, and our next project was going to Bellevue and Maple to do the same thing. Uh, the kitchens and bathrooms have not been renovated there in, since I was here for sure, since I got here for sure. So, uh, we're trying to do that. We have included in our five-year plan a camera system for our properties where it's needed. Because we realized there are some security issues on some of our properties. And so we, we tried it once before, but the cost was just so outrageous, we could not afford it. And we understand that the part, the cost has dramatically decreased, so we're taking another look at that because that does make a difference. We want to upgrade the exterior to Old Omega Road. And then, um, another thing that's on the horizon, HVAC sys, all of our HVAC systems that still have Freon are going to have to be changed out, um, in the next few years. So that's going to be a huge expense because all of our properties have central air and heat. We've got to change all that out. And, uh, that's where we are. That's our plans for the future. Our current issues that we're facing, rent reform, I'm sure you've seen that on the news, that, um, the Secretary Ben Carson has issued an, um, a bill, well, through Congress, to change the way we calculate rent. So that's, that's going to be a major thing. That's going to be major. We have our Strong Families Initiative coming up with HUD. That's this summer. It had been the Fatherhood Initiative in previous years. We wanted us to, you know, do programs to emphasize fatherhood. And so now they've changed it to emphasize families. We'll be looking at doing that. And of course, I've mentioned the contract that, uh, at Old Omega Road with Bent Pine Construction. Now, I mentioned we have a, um, the nonprofit. And the goals of that's Tifton Housing Partners, and that nonprofit, the goals of that are rehabilitation of affordable housing, development of affordable housing, homeownership counseling, and resident services. Okay, that's my presentation. You have any questions?
That's a lot of info.
What's happening?
It's good. It's, it's just, I just, that was really, really good. I'm just curious, how often do you and the board member visit the various properties?
I go to the properties about once a month, uh, on the weekend. I may not go to all of them at the same time, but I try to at least ride, ride through, just to take a look and see what's going on.
And I think that's one of the biggest, I guess, questions we have. And again, we wanted to illustrate when we talk about conditions of property, and again, we're not here to point any fingers, but we want to know how we could help, or maybe there is an explanation, or is there something else that could be done? And, um, I, I just want to show a couple because they're really very, very, they stand out. Whether it's, you know, mattresses, or whether it's on the one on the left, there was a fire and it's being redone. So if that's policy on how, how we, you know, we do that, um-
I can address that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, with the, the two units on Alder Street, that's been a very long process. It took us about six to eight months to deal with the issue. Yes, I will.
Like a drain.
Just real quick, Shonda, this is really, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, what, what is happening? And some of the things that you go through, where, what we can expect.
Okay, with that property, with, uh, Alder Street, those are seven oh one and seven oh three Alder Street. And if you're not familiar with it, we had those units burned, and they were burned, damaged beyond repair. We went back and forth with the insurance company because the insurance company didn't want to give us the maximum amount, uh, because we have to tear them down. Anyway, so we had to submit a special application, uh, to the special application center in Chicago. We've done that. They instructed us that we had to have an environmental assessment from the field office. Well, contacted the field office, they have completed it, and so we have to resubmit. And it is be, it has been resubmitted. Uh, so hopefully, and I asked, could I go ahead and tear down the property, and I couldn't get it in writing. And, um, as you know, if it did, if it's not in writing, it didn't happen. So I didn't want to tear it down until they put it in writing that we could demolish the property. So hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll have that torn down.
Okay, all right, good. Um, and again, we're, we're looking at it, if, if we could help with law enforcement, we will do so. Like the car on the left, um, this is Johnny, that's two months, maybe?
Yeah.
Uh, so if it's on the street and it doesn't move, and if the tags are fired, or if it's creating a block in, uh, for, you know, other parking, do you want us to look at that? Is there something you could tell us?
If you can give us something saying that, we, we tow them. What we do is eventually tow them, but we get a lot of, they call HUD, you know, we, we get some blowback when we talk about towing. Uh, but if you all can write a citation for it, we can go ahead and get it towed. It's not a problem. And I, on the, you mentioned the mattresses. Um, I think I spoke with you, Mr. Terrell, once before, um, about that, because that was one of your concerns, I believe. During the tax season, you will see more mattresses and more furniture on the side of the street because people are buying new furniture. You will, you will definitely see it. But we try to go through and get it all up, um, as, as soon as possible.
Yeah, the yard with, with all the white, white appliances, refrigerators and stoves.
Now, that's the ware, that, that's the warehouse, I think, right there.
I think so, let's see. Yeah, that is, it's, it's where all the refrigerators, what's called the white goods just are stored.
That has to be written off, so we have to go through a board process to take those off of inventory. So it's not a, we can't just throw them away until the board votes on it. And what they like to do is collect quite a few, and then we write them all off at one time and then take them to the landfill.
Well, you can allow them to write them.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
What does that mean?
How long, how, yeah, but how long do they sit? I mean, I, I realize you want to accumulate, but it's, you know, you accumulating ten or twenty or a hundred?
No, it's not a, it's not a set number. We do it about every three or four months. Because the board only meets once a month, so we have to wait until the board, the board meets. Would you like us to do them once a month?
Well, I mean, we're, we're trying-
It's just kind of a cycle.
We're trying to eliminate hassle.
Yeah.
You know, and so do you want to, that, that's the issue.
We can certainly do it more often. We can certainly-
To avoid having, we're trying to clean things up.
That's, and I'm, I, I understand completely, not a problem. In fact, we have them on, they'll be on our board meeting for Thursday night. We'll have some to get, get taken off the books then.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Uh, uh, what, what, what I, this board would like for you, if there's anything that we can do to help you.
Right.
We, we want, we want to, we want to do anything that you need us to do to help you.
Uh, let me tell you, one thing that really was great was when your code enforcement officers started writing tickets for trashing yards. That is awesome. That's, that's awesome.
That you hear that.
Because that makes, because he wants, because what we did was went out and talked about it. Okay, letting folks know, you're going to get charged two hundred and fifty dollars, I believe that's the amount, if you don't, you know, if you don't keep your area clean. And so the word kind of spread, so that, that was-
Is there, is, is there anything within their, um, and I may be getting in the weeds here, but is there anything within their rental agreement that says they need to keep that clean?
Yes.
Is there, is there any inspection of the properties for?
We charge, we charge, uh, for that, and that is a part of the lease that you have to, um, they have their tenant responsibilities.
Right.
We charge, they clean up. You remember I said we have some issues with mental illness?
Yeah.
Sometimes those are the residents who don't quite understand. And it's, you know, we, we try to bear with folks. We're, I tell people all the time, we're in the pro, we're in the habit of housing people.
Right.
We don't want to put people out if at all necessary, if at all possible. We don't want to do that.
Yeah.
We can check up on that, so-
And I'm wondering if maybe we could help with just, I mean, you've got lots of good education classes. Maybe we could have our, you know, our code guys go out maybe one of the Saturdays where you're doing something and, and, you know, to say, hey, guys, this is what, you know, we need to do as a community, and, and this is how you can help and, and, and educate versus just psych people, you know, but help them to understand the importance of keeping their, their areas.
Just let me point out, because a couple of them are real, real, uh, particular, like, uh, the one on the left, the hole in the fence, uh, by the playground, there's a, there's a pretty big hole where-
I can't even, I'm sorry, I can't see it. It may be just my glasses.
Yeah, I have, see if I have enough. Okay, uh, on the left, um, there, there's a pretty good hole right there.
Is the fence down, or is that just a sidewalk there?
Yeah, there's a, there's a little gap in the fence.
Because now sometimes we do leave gaps. I, I can't tell if the fence has actually been torn apart.
So properties could go in, in between properties, is that acceptable?
And it may be one property. I'm thinking, that looks like possibly, uh, I don't know if that's Old Omega Road or-
Yes, ma'am.
That's Old Omega Road?
Old Omega Road.
At Peterson?
The, the path to come from Peterson's over to Old Omega Road, that's, that's, that's the, the fence. Uh, uh, you, there was a fence there, and somehow, it, uh, it's gone, I mean, portion of it is gone, uh, open. At, at one time, you, uh, you had this, uh, raw line fence to go between there, uh, before you get to the playground. There was a, but then after, excuse me, a couple of years, uh, it became bigger and, and it was probably a sidewalk first, but now it's a driveway. What I'm saying, it, it, it had expanded to a driveway, and, and my, my concern is safety.
Yes.
There's a lot of children i- 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 in Old Omega Road and Peterson's that perhaps do come through this same little path, uh, in fact, going to school. If they miss the bus, then they got to walk over to Matt Wilson. My concern is this, do, do, you can tell us if we need to, to help you put this fence back or to stop the traffic, because, uh, uh, we were over there and we, and we saw a guy just drive through there. And, and what, which was, I, I know it was against the law, but we just weren't able to, 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 to stop him. You know, but there are some people that drive through there. If you could tell, tell us if you need us to, to put the fence back or help you, give, to help you find and get the fence put back, but just for this council, for safety concern.
Okay, what we may be able to do is put some of those steel, I mean, the barriers, uh, there to prevent it. It'll allow people to walk through, but it won't allow people to drive through.
We had, we had a plane and a, and a young fellow on a little motorbike, uh, and we just about got him, but he, he's, he took off through this little area and, and spread off. So, uh, it's just a maintenance thing, so if you could help us, just keep your eye on that, that's good.
Yes, we can do that.
When we talk about safety, um, get more of the appliances, but, uh, some of the juncture boxes, making sure that, you know, for inspection, this is, um, on Peterson's side. So just to making sure that you're looking at this, really important. And when you talk about safety, i- if, if we could ask from a planning standpoint, and I guess if we could all dial it back years ago, uh, at the end of a cul-de-sac and, and pushing through and making a, a, a big U so you could drive through, because the cars, the way they park is causing a, a, a traffic situation. And I don't know if the board has taken that up, I don't know if that's a concern. But we had an incident just last week, and, and when officers trying to get in there, we had a fire once, and the cars on both sides is causing some major issues for public safety. So that's one of the things that we certainly want to address, if you could.
Is there any way, uh, the issues that you've identified, that either someone can either ride with me to identify those issues that you see? Uh, because some of them I, I just haven't, I haven't noticed, and I drive through, but, um, I just haven't noticed them. But if you all can list out, uh, the, some of the issues that you're having, we can most, we could certainly address those.
Yeah, you talked about the cameras, uh, that's been up throughout, if they've been functioning, so we'd be interested to-
Now, those cameras at these, no. When we rehabbed that property, we had to, uh, we had to take all the cameras offline. And they, we were having problems with them anyway. They were, it wasn't a good camera system at all. And so there, none of those, none of those cameras work over there. In fact, they were all supposed to be taken down.
Okay. Um, yeah, so more of the junk, we could help with that, hot holes and, and some of the roads that are pretty, pretty sizable, we could certainly help with that. And then, you know, if you look at the stuff, that's code enforcement issue on the left. And then, you know, when you're talking about fire, that, I think that, uh-
That's the fire, that's the fire damage area. Hopefully, that'll be down in the next couple of months.
Okay, because that's been what, over?
It's been over years, but it was January of twenty seventeen. It took, we didn't get the check from the, the insurance company, I believe, until December of twenty seventeen.
So the, the, the funds that you receive from, um, from HUD, about the, you know, one, let's just say one point seven million dollars. So you take that in program improvements to the, uh, properties, is that how you do that?
Yes, that's what we put in the budget. Uh, and it's, it's all kinds of stuff. We have, um, of course, we have salaries. Maintenance is our biggest expense. We do about between thirty-five hundred and four thousand work orders per year on, uh, on our units. And so most of that money that we get from HUD goes toward work orders. Um, air filters, paint, just anything that you would need to, uh, turn over a unit or fix something, fix holes in the wall, sheet rock, they can, cabinets, everything.
Has there been any research on grants from, from HUD or from the federal level, or state?
Uh, there are no grants. We, there is, uh, an emergency and safety grant, I think, out there. But they only give out sixteen, I think, per year, and it's thirty-four hundred housing authorities. And so you have to decide, do you want to spend money trying to get a grant that only sixteen people, sixteen agencies get in the whole country? Because the, the, it's very slim chance that you'll actually get it.
All right.
But other than that, other, we get capital fund and, uh, subsidy. Though, that's about the only thing that HUD is giving out these days. We used to have, years and years ago, I've been doing this a long time, uh, what's called a drug elimination grant. And it was for safety measures, uh, for public housing units, whether through police support or through changing the properties, construction, but that's been eliminated.
Okay, good. Mary, any other questions?
Yes.
Safety, is, is there a safety issue at Peterson Apartments after dark?
Probably, yes.
Or is there something that we can do, or, you know, I mean, because I hear that.
We do too.
Been hearing it for a while. What, what can we do to, to address that?
Increase patrols, increase patrols, that's.
Okay, well, if, if we do that, and, and people get, you know, cited, or arrested, or whatever, what's, you know, I guess, I guess there's an eviction process like you were talking about before.
Yes, um, one of, if, one of the things that is hard for us to do is evict someone based on, uh, resident reporting. We need police reports. We've got to have evidence, um, in order to evict. We need police reports. We've got to have evidence in order to evict. We've got to have, because we take that straight to court. And if it's a violent crime, I like, I think a young man got killed on our property earlier. Well, late last year, I believe. He wasn't a resident, and neither was, the child that died was not a resident, and neither was the perpetrator. And so, there is nobody to evict for that. There's nothing we can do about that one. But if there is issues at a particular apartment, apartment, if that apartment is identified and we have a police report to go along with that, then we do take action.
Well, we have just a minute left. Mary, do you want to give an overview of redevelopment plan or how this is?
Yeah, we are. And y'all, excuse me, I've got some kind of crud going on here. The City of Tipton's extremely excited about our redevelopment plans. We, for lack of a better term, we're calling it the Matt Wilson Redevelopment Area. But we've identified a pretty significant part of our community that unfortunately has been ignored for some time. So we're looking at going in with new infrastructure, going in and helping people to rehab properties, some infill development, removing significantly blighted properties. This was a partnership that I think we're going to be working with not only neighborhoods, but our school system and many organizations to make this a successful venture. But this came through a letter that we received several years ago from our school system saying that the area around the Matt Wilson Neighborhood was in dire need of attention. And when we really started to look at that, we agreed. And so, we've really been evaluating our neighborhoods and our community to make sure that we're restoring neighborhoods, to make sure that we're creating safe environments for families to live. And I was really glad that you talked about the family initiative because that's really a focus for us to. Safety is the number one priority for councilmen and folk, and so, we're always looking at safety aspects. So it's reaching out and being good partners with the various organizations within the community that can, one, how can we help you accomplish your goal and your mission, but then how can you help us accomplish ours? Because if we're creating safe neighborhoods, that builds a strong tax base. If we have a strong tax base, we have a good school system, we have a good school system, we'll have people that'll be working, and it just, it builds upon itself. So we're looking to, we're looking to you as members of our Housing Authority to help us accomplish that goal. Again, to reiterate what Councilman Terrell and Councilman Sales has both indicated, we want to be, you know, what can we do to help with that? Whether it's dealing with issues of crime, with blind, with cleanliness, with programming for the residents to help them. We'd love to educate and help, rather than just, you know, slice them on the wrist. Let's explain why it's important that you keep your area clean and how it impacts your neighbors and how collectively we can really make a big difference. So we're very excited about this redevelopment in the neighborhoods that I think we're going to make a big difference in. And working with the neighbors, you know, what is, it's not just us going in saying, this is what your neighborhood needs to be. It's what is the history, the story of your particular street? What is it that you want to see, and how can we help you accomplish that as a city government? So that's kind of where we are. So I think having this meeting today has been very beneficial. And again, we want to be good partners and good stewards, saying, thank you for what you do.
All right, well, Councilman Terrell and I, we could follow up with Sumter, and we could go over some, what we're seeing, kind of need for explanation. If there's something that relates to the board, then certainly the board can take action, and we'll go from there. Fair enough. Any questions for us?
No questions, no passing of the guard seat. Lucky to know, we really appreciate your alignment and presenting you, realize that's a team effort.
Yes, yes.
This is a team effort. We'd encourage you to come over and spend some time with you. Not from a professional role that you play, you know, just come over and spend some time.
Absolutely.
I share a few and we'll leave after this one. Many of us moved out of the community, and some of us are staying. So when we begin to talk about it, it's not something that you're talking about happening across town where we actually live. So nothing else, you know, the threat and the safety issue, come over and go and walk with us.
How was my client?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
You want to take five and you're here?
Yes, thank you so much.